Quarter, thank you all for being with us this evening. And as we do at each of our meetings, we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In the time since our previous county commission meeting, our nation observed the anniversary of the September 11th attacks on our country. Before we undertake the public business that we have in our agenda this evening, let us have a moment of silence to remember that almost 3,000 people died on that day in York City, at the Pentagon, and in Shanksville, Pennsylvania. Those who lost their lives that day included 2,135 civilians, 343 firefighters, 71 law enforcement personnel, 55 military personnel, and 371 non-US citizens who were working at the World Trade Center and the Pentagon when the attacks occurred. Please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. And thank you again for being with us this evening. I'd like to read the ethics reminder to the Board of Commissioners before we get started on the issues. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing Board in an open and public manner. Are there any items on the agenda the outcome of which will have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any Board member? Also, does any Board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming -- excuse me, before the Board today? There being none, all Board members have a duty and obligation to vote. All right, we have now arrived at our public comment period for the beginning of this meeting. Let me just review quickly our policies on public comment. The time limit for individual comment to the Board is three minutes. Please share your name and where you live with us when you provide comment. If your time expires, you may leave a question along with your name, address, and phone number with the county manager. Board members are not expected to comment on any matters during the public comment section. This is your time to speak to us. And the Board reserves the right to deny public address on any subject that's been previously presented to the Board during the same meeting. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak to us at this time? Yes, sir.
Hello, members. I'm Todd Stimson from South Asheville, Fletcher. Oh, I was wanting to thank you. I've heard the letter of support for our medical cannabis that we were wanting you to encourage legislators has been in the works, and hopefully some of you have taken in consideration of signing it, and hopefully we'll be hearing back from you here soon. I'm bringing you information today that I'll be handing over to them that'll hopefully enlighten you some more as far as with medical cannabis. One is a public policy poll that was done last year, which it'll show if you sign the letter of support, you're going to be on the right side of history because the support for medical cannabis in North Carolina has rose a lot. The first question on here is pretty much in terms of recreational, and you'll see that people are not in favor of recreational, which is truly understandable because of different views in that. But when you look at the second question on the public policy poll, it shows 74 percent support the medical use recommended by a doctor. So this is done last year, and then the Elon poll that we had done on the resolution showed 80 percent. So just from this poll last year to the Elon poll that was done this year, it's changed 6 percent because this shows 74 percent. The other one I'll be passing to you is a brochure that has some of the history of cannabis and the extract, and then your endocannabinoid system. It'll explain. It's pretty much straightforward. It's not in full scientific, which sometimes can be confusing to members or to people that aren't actually doctors. So this'll enlighten you a little bit on the endocannabinoid system, the CB1 receptor and the CB2 receptor that's in your system. So I really thank you for all you've done, your time, and everything else, and I'd like to pass this on if I can.
Okay, and when you do, I'll give you a copy of the letter.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Yes, sir. You can go next, and then Mr. Rice, you can follow.
Good evening. My name is Lag Hornthal, and I'm a member, a resident of Buncombe County and from the Reynolds District. I'm here to comment on the apartment complex called the Reserve that was recently approved for Charlotte Highway near Reynolds High School. As you may know, the apartment complex was approved at the last planning board meeting, which I attended after receiving a notice in the mail five business days before the meeting. Five business days, which is also the minimum amount of time that this developer from California was required to give the neighbors of this community that he wishes to build this apartment complex. To my knowledge, local schools, churches, and community businesses were not notified nor engaged in this process. Planning Board makes it very clear that their purview did not include traffic studies or considering the safety or impact a development may have on a community, and there were steps that should be taken after the approval was made. No evidence was given of how the developer addressed the zoning ordinance that states particular attention has been paid to automotive and pedestrian safety and convenience, traffic flow, and control. Instead, Mr. Lyken, the Board Chair, said he had every reason to believe that an independent traffic report would be a positive report because that is what they are paid to do. That logic is unacceptable and an affront to county citizens in this community that will have to live with and be influenced by the decision this Board makes. Every morning, I sit at the stop sign at Cedar Crest Drive across from the Barrington Village Apartments and watch as traffic comes flying down Minehole Gap, which is 45 miles an hour, and the traffic coming from the other direction once they clear Reynolds High School and the Ingalls, and they start heading up and trying to get up speed to go up the mountain. And it's a very tricky corridor, and there are safety issues at any time of day, particularly in the morning when there are high school students and parents with children trying to go to school. Traffic often is backed up all the way up Minehole Gap, and as recently as three weeks ago, there was a traffic accident involving a school bus. This is tricky even before another 400 additional cars are going to be added into this neighborhood. I'm not opposed to this development, but I am opposed to this process that excludes citizen engagement, and I think it's unacceptable. Perhaps my biggest issue with this process is how it completely ignores the county's sustainability plan and the county's commitment to protect the social, economic, and environmental health of our community. Of the 14 goals and objectives, one stands out at me the most, and that's the one regarding citizens' participation in community decisions. Within that, the goals and objectives, increase opportunities for civic engagement and participation, and ensure that information reaches citizens. I'd like to say that sending a letter to neighbors a week before the final hearing is inadequate. I'd like to end with respectfully that you ask this and future developers to be patient and show that our county, we're not shutting the door on anybody, but they need to engage with their citizens and the neighbors. Miss, at least we can do if we want to remain sustainable.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Jerry Rice from Camber. That's a good spot to be from, you know? I don't -- I asked for it. That's a different story. You know what I'm saying, Mr. Chairman? Got some things on my mind, you know? I want you to hear them, too. Mr. Chairman, rules and procedures. I want you to go back to the book, and you and your lawyer and your crowd, get them together. I want to know about public comment, and I want to know how you can shut me down when I get back up in a public hearing to do a public hearing, and you tell me I can not speak in public comment about the same thing. You need to review your procedures, and I want to hear and let the public know that I believe you're wrong. So I'm bringing it to your attention, so I'd like to report on that because I don't think you're right. That's it. That's one. The other one is on the county investigation with Dr. Wanda Green. And don't sit there all stunned that you can't talk. Your lips are not filled. You are the official people of this county. I would like to know as a taxpayer, what is going on with this investigation and what is it about? Now, I want you to go and I want you to review this organizational chart that Ms. Green is showing you today. You know who's at the top of that list? Me and these folks sitting out here. We are the citizens and taxpayers of this county that you represent, and we are the people that needs to know. And if you don't have attorneys that are bright enough to give us some information and let us know what is being investigated, you're not doing your job. And I'll call the public to get rid of every one of you. That's the way I look at it. If you can't give us some information to go on. I know plenty about court, and let me tell you, the way corruption works, it don't work from the bottom up. It works from a top down. There are plenty of crooked lawyers, judges, and they're right here in Asheville. Okay? So don't think it's somewhere else. And when you go behind closed doors with criminal attorneys and you've not hired them, but yet you're back there, that's not legal. Is that right, Mr. Lawyer? Let's call it what it is. The public on your organization chart is at the top. We're paying it. We paid $8 million out for one deal. No telling what we'll go with this one. So the public needs to know. And let's see who's got...
All right, thank you. Your time's up.
Yeah. The other fellow went over 30 seconds, so you know you're supposed to do the next one.
I also asked him to wrap it up, and his time's up as well.
But it's good to wrap up on a good note.
All right, thank you, Jerry. All right, who else? Yes, ma'am.
My name's Taylan Breeden, and I live in Lester, North Carolina. And I just wanted to take a moment to thank all the county commissioners for not just hearing us, but also listening to us when we came to you guys about the resolution and the letter of support. I have Crohn's disease, and this is not only life-changing for me, but life-saving for North Carolinians across the state. And because our legislators have not been listening to us, having the local governments push for this means so much to us. So again, thank you, Brownie, and all of you guys for the letter of support.
Right. Who else? Anybody else? All right, yes, you're next.
Hi, I'm Hillary Brown with the Study Collective. I just wanted to speak really quickly to -- I know that tonight y'all are considering a resolution about noting the role of drug manufacturers in the opioid crisis. The Study Collective, who I work with, is a needle exchange in town, and we also do naloxone distribution for Buncombe County. We're the only needle exchange in Buncombe County that also does naloxone distribution. Naloxone reverses opioid overdose -- overdoses in about 60 seconds, and we give that to drug users who we believe are the real first responders to opioid overdoses. In the first six months of this year, we had 124 reversals reported. So that's just drug users reversing other drug users' overdoses. We obviously get an up-close-and-personal look at the crisis on a weekly basis. We have two needle exchange days every week, on Tuesdays and Wednesdays. Is that the needle exchange today? I'm glad that y'all are considering a resolution to hold drug manufacturers responsible for their role in this, but I do want to say that this is a multifaceted problem, and we need to keep that in mind. Just shutting down drug manufacturers or prescribers is not going to be enough because we already have folks who are highly addicted to opioids, and so we're going to need a lot of funding on the other end for harm reduction and for treatment on demand. A lot of what we do when we see drug users at this point, and they say, "I'm ready to stop using, and I don't want needles today. I'd like to go to detox, or I'd like to go to treatment," we really struggle with finding a placement for them because there's not enough funding for treatment centers. So we want to make sure that when we do stuff on the end of cutting off people's sources of drugs, we also do something on the other end to help them with treatment and with receiving harm reduction, like clean needles, to deal with things like Hep C and HIV and eliminating the spread of that, and also funding our naloxone pool because more and more people are needing that as overdoses increase, as fentanyl increases in our community and carfentanil as well. So thank you so much. Yeah.
All right, thank you. All right, anyone else? Okay. I'm sorry, was there one more? Okay, yes, sir, and you'll be the last person this evening.
Hi, my name is Aaron Clark. I live in Hendersonville, North Carolina. I just want to say I also would like to thank you all for the letter of support for the medical cannabis resolution. I also just urge you to consider in your policies how to look at the drug opioid crisis in America more as a medical health and mental health issue rather than a criminal issue. And I greatly support many of the words that have been said here tonight, so I thank you very much for your time. Have a good day.
All right, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to review and approval of the consent agenda. I think there was one item that Commissioner Belcher requested that we get a little bit more information on.
Chairman, before we do that, could I ask, is it okay if I ask staff a question about something that came up in comment? Just a short question.
Sure.
There was a comment about the five days' notice, John, on the...
I was going to check on that.
Yeah. It sounds, and I know I can't direct staff or anything, but it sounds way too quick, and I would certainly like to get an answer on that in a future date so the Board would know. Thanks. Thank you, Chairman.
Sure, no problem. All right. Hello, Ms. Price. Could you tell us a little bit more about the Article 46 item?
Absolutely. This budget amendment is just kind of the accounting housekeeping needed when we're ready to close a project that's completed or isn't going to have any future expenditures. So in this case, that's the AB Tech parking deck, the multipurpose building, and the cost we had associated with the arts, science, and engineering building. So this is just removing those budgets, and then we'll do the financial accounting on the other side to close these out because they are completed.
So there are no new monies in that at all, so...
Not at all. It's just reducing the budget.
All right, thank you.
All right. Any other questions about any item on the consent agenda, or would someone like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda, which also includes approval to follow the remainder of the proposed agenda?
I'll make a motion. Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Okay, we've got a proclamation that we want to present. I believe Rachel Bliss is here to receive it, and perhaps others, too, and that is the Proclamation of International Day of Peace, and Commissioner Jasmine Beach-Ferrara will present it.
No, I'm not Rachel. Thank you all for being with us this evening. I'll read the proclamation and then turn things over to y'all. Whereas the ideal of peace embraces the deepest hopes of all peoples and remains humanity's guiding inspiration, and whereas in 1981, the United Nations proclaimed the International Day of Peace be devoted to commemorating and strengthening the ideals of peace both within and among all nations and peoples, whereas the United Nations expanded the observance of the International Day of Peace in 2001 to include the call for a day of global ceasefire and nonviolence, and invited all nations and people to honor a cessation of hostilities for the duration of the day, and whereas global crises compel all citizens to work toward converting humanity's noblest aspirations of world peace into the practical reality of a culture of peace for future generations, whereas in Buncombe County, the following groups and organizations work to promote peace and justice in our communities, including Peace Cast TV, Share International, First Congregational United Church of Tri- Christ, French Broad Food Co-op, The Block Off Biltmore, Art of Chiropractic, Ethical Humanist Society of Asheville, the Center for Art and Spirit at St. George, WNC for Peace, Papa and Mama Bear's Peace Garden, Women in Black, Peace Day Asheville, Veterans for Peace Chapter 099 Asheville, Peace is Possible North Carolina, Brooks Howell Residence, Aura Home Women Vets, Asheville School, Veterans for Live Asheville, Western North Carolina Green Party, Western North Carolina Chapter of the Physicians for Social Responsibility, and the Asheville Friends Meeting. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners for the County of Buncombe as follows: That September 21st, 2017, be proclaimed International Day of Peace in Buncombe County, and that this Board does hereby urge all agencies, organizations, schools, places of worship, and individuals in our county to commemorate in an appropriate manner the International Day of Peace. This is the 19th day of September 2007. Signed, the Board of Commissioners for the County of Buncombe. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, my name's Rachel Bliss, and we're at it again this year. We had hoped last year maybe we'd bring world peace, but not quite there yet. So I just want to tell you about what we have planned for Thursday on the 21st. We will be gathering at the peace pole over at, between the City Hall and Pac Square, and we will be meditating beginning at 11:30 and drawing forth all the hopes and goals of peace in the coming year. We hope that the City Hall will ring the bells at noon, and at that time, Representative Susan Fisher will read the proclamation that our district has put together from our state district. Also, this year, our governor has also signed a proclamation, and it's a week of nonviolence. So we can walk right down the line, our governor, to our representative, our county, our city. They've all proclaimed Thursday Peace Day. We have a special guest this year from the Moscow Ballet. She will be telling us about the part in The Nutcracker coming December 3rd where they went from the land of the sweets to the land of peace and harmony, and she should be dressed in her dove costume, so we're excited about that. Lastly, we'll have our own white dove release, and later that day, I will be a guest along with our Moscow Ballet ballerina on the Better World at WVPN, and we'll be talking. Hopefully, we'll get to talk about our relationships between Russia and the United States. So I'm really enthusiastic about that. And Colin would like to add some more information.
Thank you so much, and we travel together. And I just want to thank every commission. This is such an important issue, and it's been accentuated today at the United Nations if people have been watching the news. We need peace, peace amongst the peoples of this planet without war, without oppression, without hunger, without poverty, without... It just needs to happen now versus later, and sometimes it can't be resolved just by a proclamation, but that you all step forward and sign this proclamation is a strong statement, and I want to applaud you for it, I really do. Because I'm not sure if you know it, Asheville is an international city of peace. It's one of the 172 now international cities of peace. We did have a wonderful ceremony the other day at the Center for Art and Spirit. We gave out three peacemaker awards, two to local Buncombe County residents, one who's Ann Craig, who's been a longtime activist and is now with the Palestinian and Jewish Equalitarian team. I can never do that right. I'm so sorry. And then one for Amy Cantrell, a beloved Asheville, who, you could go on and on, but she seems to be in the news faster than we can talk about her. And she's doing actually a clothing drive right now for homeless people. She had to leave for the winter, and she did one when the storm came here as well. We also gave an award in honor of Heather Hayer, or Heather Hire, the young woman who was killed fighting white supremacy in Charlottesville, Virginia. And this is... Anyway, I actually, the other funny thing is, the reason, Rachel, when I smiled, I am the Papa from the Papa and Mama Bear's Peace Garden. I'm going to be on a radio interview tomorrow at 103.3, which I invite you to listen to. I invite you to come to any of the ceremonies and in your own way encourage peace amongst everybody, an openness and an understanding, because the truth is, we can get along without war. It's absolutely possible. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, and the next item under Good News is we have some congratulations to extend to some of our county employees. And so I think we have a video on this item, so why don't we start with that, and then we'll say a bit more about it.
We push about 400 tons of trash a day. It'll keep you on your toes. Congratulations, James, from Buncombe County Government. Good luck at the International Rodeo Competition in October. Florida, just look out, here I come.
Okay, and so as stated in the video, James Yount, veteran heavy equipment operator at the landfill, won first place in the North Carolina Solid Waste Association of North Carolina Landfill Dozer Competition. He will go on to compete nationally in October. Two other employees competed and placed in the top five, Junior Crane on the rubber tire loader and Nick Edmonds on the compactor. So we want to congratulate all of them, and we've got some certificates to present to them, and Commissioners Mike Fryer and Jasmine Beach-Ferrara will present them. So please, come on up, guys. Great job.
Make this official. James, the Buncombe County Commissioners wish to express our appreciation to you with the certificate. On behalf of all Buncombe County citizens, we take the opportunity of your... with the certificate. On behalf of all Buncombe County citizens, we take the opportunity of your achievement to express our respect and appreciation for the dedication and commitment that you have shown as a Buncombe County employee. Your years of outstanding service have helped to lead this community into tomorrow and keep our county a wonderful place to live and work. And we're honored to present this to you. On a personal note, it was an honor to see you in action out at the landfill. Thank you for your service every day, and we'll be cheering for you in October and look forward to updates about it. So congratulations and thank you.
James is not here, but stay up here for a minute. Or Junior's not here, James is here. But Nick, I'm proud to give this to you because about 2000, Nick was doing a little electrician work, and he decided to come out and help me work at my little car lot. So I've known this young man for a long time. He's doing a great job down there, and he went to the competition and they finished in the top five. So we're just as proud of these guys finishing the top five. We are very proud of you being able to go to the thing. But Nick, personally, it says basically same, it says the same thing his does. I'm proud to be able to give this to you. Stephen, come up here and get this one for Junior if you would. Since you've had to work with these guys all this time. That and Junior, we got, all these people were so, me personally, I'm very proud of all these gentlemen. These are my people. And they work hard, they work every day. And you don't know how much I appreciate you. And I think you do, because I like coming down and aggravating them every now and then, so, but thank you again for what you do.
Hey guys, come by the, come, come by here, we want to shake you in too, so we just, we didn't come by there y'all. We didn't want to crowd it up.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, good luck. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. How are you all? How are you?
Yeah, congratulations.
We need to stand up behind where you, we better stand up. Stand up or we're going to look.
One, stand up, come on. Will you get us all by?
Okay. All right, thanks everyone. And the county manager's report will be within the report on the proposed, some of the change, changes in staff structure. So the other item under new business tonight is a resolution supporting legal action regarding the opioid crisis in Buncombe County, which is also a crisis in Western North Carolina and all across our state and all across our, our country. And so what I'd like to do is I'd like to, to read this resolution into the record. It's a pretty, it's a fairly long resolution, so I'm going to have some help from Commissioner Beach Farrar. I'll read the first half and then she'll read the second half into it. And this is a very, it's a very grave issue facing our community right now. Even in just the last weeks, we have gotten information from Mission Hospital and other medical staff in our community. And the number of lives being lost and, and lives being ruined is just, it'd be hard to overstate. So we have been looking hard at this issue this year and trying to understand what positive difference we can make at the local level. There's a lot of people working on this, and it's certainly an issue that is beyond the scope of any one organization or level of government or to, to solve by itself. But we want to do what we can, and that's part of what we want to talk about tonight in terms of one part of our overall approach. And once there's a, so I'm going to read the resolution, I'd like to, we'd like to have a motion and second, to adopt the resolution. We will take public comment on the consideration of the resolution once we've got a motion to consider it. Whereas Buncombe County is in the midst of an opioid crisis that is taking an enormous toll on the people and families of Buncombe County, as well as impacting law enforcement, emergency management, and health and human services with significant increased demand for services. And whereas over 17 million opioid prescription pills were dispensed in 2016 to Buncombe County residents, resulting in increased numbers of overdoses. And whereas over 70% of children entering foster care enter as a result of substance use by a parent or parents. And whereas the physical impact of Buncombe County related to healthcare, healthcare costs, jail administration, and incarceration, emergency management services, child welfare, and public assistance will likely exceed $19 million in federal, state, and county funding. And whereas beyond the physical impact, the human impact of this epidemic on the parents, spouses, children, siblings, and friends who have witnessed and experienced the suffering, and all too often the loss of life of a loved one is beyond measure. The loss of the gifts and talents of those individuals to their families, communities, and employers remains forever. And whereas treatment options for people with substance use disorders are limited, particularly for the under and uninsured. And whereas the use of Narcan by EMS increased to nearly 500 incidents in 2016, with nearly 800 inmates on a detox protocol in the jail. And whereas several units of local government across the nation have filed lawsuits against prescription pain manufacturers in an effort to hold the same accountable for their role in the opioid epidemic. And whereas the North Carolina Attorney General is working with a bipartisan coalition of a majority of the state attorney, attorneys general across the country in an ongoing investigation to evaluate whether manufacturers have engaged in unlawful practices in the marketing and sale of opioids. And whereas such investigations are sometimes a precursor to litigation, which could be an appropriate avenue for the recovery of damages for Buncombe County. And whereas Buncombe County strongly believes that it may be entitled to recovery against painkiller manufacturers and wishes to pursue recovery in the most efficient way possible, it therefore believes that the state is in the best position to efficiently procure such a result. However, the county is willing to proceed on its own if any action or inaction by the state does not appropriately address its concerns.
Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners for the County of Buncombe as follows. That it supports the state of North Carolina's involvement in the bipartisan coalition of the majority of states across the country investigating whether prescription painkiller manufacturers have engaged in unlawful practices in the marketing and sale of opioids. That it recommends legal action be taken and compensation be sought by the state of North Carolina on behalf of North Carolina counties if it is found that painkiller manufacturers have engaged in unlawful practices in the marketing and selling of opioids. That notwithstanding its recommendation above, the County of Buncombe intends to investigate the feasibility of taking legal action itself against prescription painkiller manufacturers. That the Buncombe County Legal Department is instructed to monitor the ongoing investigation by the state and evaluate its effect on the county to investigate the feasibility of joining any lawsuits or potential lawsuits. To publish a request for information seeking an attorney, attorneys, and/or law firm competent to handle any litigation the county might pursue and to report the findings to the county manager. That by and with the consent of the county legal department, county staff is hereby instructed to proceed with this undertaking and all acts and doings of officers, employees, and agents of the county whether taken prior to, on, or after the date of this resolution that are in conformity with and in the furtherance of the purposes and intents of this resolution as described above shall be and the same hereby are in all respects ratified, approved, and confirmed. That the chairman and county manager or either of them or their designee are hereby authorized to execute such documents as may be required to affect the purposes and intents of this resolution and to interview prospective law firms that respond to the aforementioned request for information. And finally, that this resolution shall become effective upon its adoption.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I would like to put forward that we did go, go, go with this.
That's a motion?
Yes, it is.
All right, thank you. We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. I'd like to ask if there's any other commissioners that would like to comment at this time. We're also going to take public comment, and then of course we can have further discussion after public comment.
We'll comment after.
All right, sounds good. All right, I'd like to, we have a motion to consider, to support adoption of this resolution. I'd like to invite any members of the public who would like to speak on the proposed resolution. Yes, sir, we'll start over here and then you can go next.
Good evening, I'm Frank Casablanca, and I'm a nurse at MAHEC. And I'm in charge of continuing education, and I'm very thankful for your time and your consideration of this matter because it is something that is incredibly important for all the providers and all of the patients that we see at MAHEC. So at MAHEC, there's several things that, that we do. Number one, we train physicians, we train future doctors, medical students. And this issue of opioids, this crisis, has definitely made us look at it completely different. Because we have to retrain current providers to adopt new methods of actually prescribing, new prescribing patterns. And one of the things that we've partnered with the county, which I think is important, if I may present this to you, is a, is a blister pack. This is something very simple, so instead of our providers writing a prescription for oxycodone, they're actually giving their patients this, which is a combination, on one side is Tylenol, and on the other side is an Advil, so it's acetaminophen and ibuprofen. And there's studies have shown that if you take one of each every six hours, it's actually much more controlling in terms of that pain. And it's not addictive. So changing these patterns is something that we're really focused on. I am presenting to you tonight, instead of Dr. Blake Fagan, who's our physician champion, because he's actually giving a presentation right now to 87 physicians at MAHEC. We've trained over 1,000 so far, over 2,500 individuals have come to our trainings. And we partner with many agencies, including Buncombe County, Via, Mission Health, other community agencies to make sure that these trainings get out into the community as well. Our school nurses that we manage for Buncombe County have enacted a lot of different programs. They're pulling in focus groups to make sure that these students understand this opioid crisis, because that's really our biggest opportunity going forward, is really focusing on that education. 90% of adults who have substance use disorder started before the age of 18. So that statistic is, is definitely something that we want to make sure that changes. And lastly, from our OB side, we work with many community providers to try to reduce the stigma. We're trying to take care of these moms, along with different organizations, including the county, including ADAC, Via, to make sure that that stigma's taken away so that these moms who are addicted not only get the best care, but actually going forward are the healthiest they can be so that when they deliver, those babies are healthy as well. Thank you, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Casablanca. I'm going to pass this forward so you can look at these.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Tammy Shook, and I am the Social Work Division Director for Benton County Health and Human Services. And I'm here to speak in favor of this resolution supporting legal action regarding the opioid crisis. You mentioned, but it's worth repeating, that 70% of the children coming into foster care in Buncombe County in the last fiscal year came into care because of substance abuse issues by one or both parents. It's a devastating impact on our families. We have 339 children in foster care right now, tonight, in Buncombe County. And 46% of those children are under the age of six. 26% of those children are two or younger. So it's tearing the fabric of our families and communities apart. The impacts to the child welfare system are staggering. We just simply do not have enough foster homes to take care of these children. And we lack some resources, like infant daycare slots, because we have so many infants coming into care. With more young children coming into care who were exposed prenatally to substances, we have an increased need for medical care for these children, so that's increased doctor's appointments and trips to the doctors and specialists. And we're mandated by the federal government to achieve permanency within 12 months for any child that comes into foster care. The nature of the disease of addiction alone makes it almost impossible to achieve that. But when parents on Medicaid have children that come into custody, they lose their Medicaid. And that means they lose any ability to get treatment, really. And that makes it very hard for us to have them remain engaged with us. And it, it makes it hard for them to see their children and be bonded to them and not enter into relapse. We know that parents love their children, and we know the power of parental love. But we also know the power and the draw of addiction is, is sometimes stronger. So we have a lot of collaborative things that we're working on right now to address this differently and in a better way. We have a child welfare worker who is outposted and embedded on the mother-baby unit at Mission Hospital. And she's there so that we can respond to this growing crisis in number of infants born with substance abuse issues in their family. And we're doing that so we can be there quicker and with consistency. We have a partnership, Frank mentioned this, with MAHEC Chirriscobee Clinic, where our prevention staff are there to visit with the mothers prenatally to help plan for the birth of their child so that when their child is born, hopefully we can keep that mother and baby together safely. We're the first county in North Carolina to implement the Evidence Informed Model called START, which is a special unit of social workers and parent mentors who engage parents very, very early when we identify that substance abuse is an issue and get them into treatment very quickly. We're also working with Western Carolina Rescue Ministries around housing and supportive services to mothers and their infants to allow them to stay together if at all possible. So the father that was injured on the job and was prescribed an opioid two years ago became addicted, we take their child into custody, and then we don't see him again for months and months. The teenager that just had their wisdom teeth out, this is Dr. Fagan's story, and was prescribed 30 Percocet. Those situations are happening every single day in Buncombe County. And people's lives, families' futures are hanging in the balance. It only takes a little to lose a lot. So we are absolutely, as social workers, feeling the impact in our child welfare system. I fully support holding those who share responsibility in creating the situation accountable for their role and believe that they should share in the societal cost to address it. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I never heard a cost to this. There's always money. Do we know what we're getting into? Need to do a little research on what the legal fees might be getting into that. You know, I've helped special kids for thirty years, and this is a piece of what we're dealing with today. In thirty years, a lot of these kids are in the system today, we're talking about opioid. The kids I've helped personally, I will deter them from taking medicine if I possibly can with their parents and the help of therapists and people that can help them. I think you need to look past your nose and not just this opioid thing. We need to go back to our mental health system that very few of you even know about, and that's value health, where they've cut services to the bone, and they have replaced therapy, and they've replaced doing the job to keep them from getting on opioids. They have replaced it with a bag of medicine rather than therapy. Now, if you live in the world that I do and Mandy do, you'll see what I'm talking about, that this opioid crisis is not just caused by the doctors, this stuff started long ago, and it gets more and more complicated as one generation passes it on to another generation. It really bothers me, because I see parents that are going from one generation to the next generation. Now, this is a system that keeps DSS in business, and this is sad. We need to remedy the problem, not just the opioid crisis. We need to go back to the front end and find out why people are taking on so much medicine. It's not just adults got medicine. You ought to see the kids that I see that has got bags of medicine, and the kids can't even keep their head up in school because they're on so much medicine, and nobody's paying attention, because that's what teachers want, really. They just want them to be a zombie, because they don't want to deal with those kids. That goes right to the heart of what I'm talking about when it comes to school issues. School issues, these kids in school need support, their legs are being taken out from under the school system, and this is the children you're going to deal with in the future of what we're talking about today on opioids, because they're not getting what they need in the school environment, much less the therapy in the community. If you want to talk more, I'm happy to give you plenty of information. We need to fix the problem, not just throw litigation at it.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, any other folks who are with us? Jim, please come up.
Good evening, I'm Jim Barrett, and I'm the Director of Physical Legal Services and also resident of the county. I'd certainly support the motion. I was just going to suggest that the county might also want to work with the insurance commission and the insurance companies, because I don't understand why you would ever get prescribed thirty Percocet to have your wisdom teeth removed, and it must be, why would the insurance and company even pay for that? They don't pay for a lot of other things.
Good point.
That's a good point.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other folks who would like to speak during public comment on this item? All right, thank you all for being with us. I'll bring it back up to the commission for further discussion on the motion.
I'd like to just take a moment to recognize Attorney Brandon Freeman from the county's legal department, who's worked really hard on crafting this resolution. Thank you for that effort. And just to express my support for this resolution, one of the main reasons is that we talk a lot about the need to invest in prevention efforts and treatment efforts and enforcement efforts, and those, of course, continue to be top priorities. I think with looking at litigation as an option, it adds accountability as a fourth prong, and starting to talk in much more serious ways about accountability for this crisis and how we can get resources to those individuals that are in such desperate need right now. So I look forward to voting in favor of this resolution.
So I've got a couple of comments. One, I want to thank the team for drafting this resolution. And we do quite a few resolutions, we have in the past, and resolution by definition is an act of determining, as other definitions. But when you look at the, once you get through the whereas, and you get to what we're resolving or determining to do, it says that we're determined to join with the federal and state and encourage their efforts in this type of lawsuit. Says we're determined that that would not be the only step that we take, that we authorize experts to step in, that we intend to be determined. This will not be the last time we talk about this. Unfortunately, the next time we talk about this, there will be some of those that have lost their lives. So we are and will be determined to continue this conversation and stand behind those that are trying to hold people accountable for this issue. I was very grateful for the positive explanation about the Tylenol and the acetaminophen. On a trip last, this weekend to Kentucky, there was two things in my car. Said if I crawled out and I was hurting, I'd take a Tylenol or an acetaminophen. And I had not heard mixing them together like that, but thank you for that. It was delivered in a very positive fashion, and I appreciate the comments. But as a commissioner, and commission, I think you'll hear that we're determined in doing what we can to help with this. I consider it our top priority, probably in the county, is dealing with this issue, so I will be supporting the resolution.
I too will be supporting the resolution, and I would like to thank all of those who worked on the resolution, giving us the information that we need to intelligently make this decision. And two, I would like to say that we all know that this is just one error that we have to start attacking the problem in Buncombe County. You know, when you look at these major drug companies that have made billions of dollars over the last, what, twenty-five or thirty years or whatever, it's only fair that we ask them to come back and help us pay the bill for a lot of the people who we need to treat now. And I agree with what some have said, and tackling this, sure, we've got to look at it, it's multifaceted. You know, we've got to look at the start and all. It's not something, it wasn't created today, it took, it's been created over the past thirty years or so, as far back, but we've got to start and do something, especially here in Buncombe County. I think this is a good way to start. And from what I've seen, I know it was mentioned by some, when you look at class action suits like this, and if you look at the major law firms, like the tobacco firms and all who handle this, the way the lawyers, usually they charge for it, is based on what they do or the settlement of the lawsuit. So I wouldn't think upfront it would cost the county a lot of money, if any, but I'm one hundred percent in favor of this resolution, and we'll be supporting it.
I think this resolution is a call to action. It's a call to action for those babies that Health and Human Services sees. It's a call to action for the women certainly currently serving in the Buncombe County Detention Center, because they got addicted. We understand that folks can get addicted from one prescription, and for people worried about the cost, class action suits are done on a contingency, but I would question anyone that puts a cost on when they lose their loved one because they got addicted to something that was never their intention. And I'd question anyone questioning the cost of saying that addiction is a choice. And if we can go at these drug companies with a full force and also show the citizens of Buncombe County that we have their back, and if we can also say to doctors, before you write that prescription, you better think of all of us, because we are on this. And I am so grateful to Health, Buncombe County Health and Human Services for the work they do and the tireless, tireless, they see this every day, and so for us, to me, this is a call for action, and we're going to fight back against this.
Any other commissioners? Before we...
Just, I'm glad this is brought forward. This is something that we have to do, and we've listened to for quite a while. Best I can tell is it's not going to cost the county anything. If the right firms come in here, it'll be a class action lawsuit, and we'll recoup some of the money that's going to be spent. And as Ellen and them said, we have kids and stuff that are on this. The basic thing is we, and I'm going to get off this, because we have to help everyone try to get away from this. It's a bad epidemic. Epidemics are bad, and this is one of the biggest ones that I've seen and listened to. There's a lot of things that we can talk about, but this is the worst thing going. It's killing people every day. As I talked to a lady in the sheriff's department yesterday, not only, all the sheriffs are carrying Narcon, now it's on fire trucks, it's in ambulances, to try to save lives of these people. And, you know, it's time for us to step up and go ahead and put it out to these law firms who wants to step forward to be able to help Buncombe County. And that's, I'm very proud that we're doing this tonight, and hopefully, we can do it tomorrow, and hopefully, we can get somebody in here quickly to be able to get after this project for us. Thank you.
I just want to echo, I mean, I totally support this resolution, and Commissioner Whiteside and Commissioner Frost said it best, is they hit the nail on the head. But the one thing that really disturbs me is when someone thinks about cost over saving a life, and we've been talking about this a long time, this was just not something brought up this week. It has been discussed how we're going to handle it, when we're going to handle it, and the time is here now. So anybody that thinks the cost is going to overdo what lives we can save here, I really feel sorry for them. So that's all I've got to say.
All right, and I would just like to add that, I'd like to also acknowledge that Bob Deutch has done a lot of the research to kind of help inform the commission around whether the type of strategy that we're talking about tonight is really warranted or not. So I really appreciate the background research that he has done. You know, the bad news is that we are not the only community struggling with this, but we also have a lot we can learn from other communities that are working on this, too. And Bob has done a lot of great work talking to folks in other communities who are asking the same hard questions that we are about what can be done, about where some of the accountability lies for the situation that we now find ourselves in. And so I really appreciate that. And the step that we're taking tonight is not to file a lawsuit, but we believe that we have enough information indicating that there are, you know, there is some real accountability that needs to be found around this matter, and so we're going to take the next steps to go through a process to consider how we might further pursue that. So thank you all for your thoughts on this this evening. If there's no other comments, let's, I'll call the question. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, it's unanimous. All right, the last item under new business is county restructuring, and I'll turn it over to our county manager, Mandy Stone, to review with us.
Chairman and commissioners, and you should see an organizational chart come up on the screen, but bringing this to you tonight for two distinct actions, and want to be sure and be totally transparent about those. The first of which is a budget amendment that you will see for five hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. I want to begin by saying this involves no new money and no new positions, but is a reflection of a restructuring I'm going to talk through to consolidate and merge and co-locate services across the county. So it's moving money and positions from one department to another versus creating new positions. The first place you'll see that reflected is on, I'd have to turn around to know, you're far right, community and employee relations. So this restructuring actually takes our health benefit program, which Kurt Euler oversees, puts it in our legal department and within our budget department, and Kurt assumes responsibility for employment law and managing of the health benefit. Lisa Eby has come over from Health and Human Services and is over our overall human resource program. So it is co-locating HHS, human resource staff, and county resource staff to remove any duplication and maximize skills and be able to, one, focus more on recruitment, two, more on staff training and leadership development, and, three, complete a pay study to address those lower-paid employees that commissioners have expressed concern about. Also coming with Lisa is community engagement. So much of the work, some of which you heard tonight, many of you have participated in, that Health and Human Services has done to more actively engage the community. Those staff now sit in the county manager's office and are doing that same community engagement on a community-wide basis across all twenty-two departments, not just specific to Health and Human Services. Next to Lisa, you'll see Rachel Nygaard, who oversees your community development funding. So it moves Rachel Nygaard into the county manager's office. Rachel brings with her the work on justice resource and the coordination, bringing in all of those court supports that the county funds, consolidating those, making sure we're as efficient as we are in the delivery of those. She's also focusing on some of the priorities the commissioners have sent, like pre-K, some of the work on pre-K and help with the Isaac Coleman Grants and some of the other initiatives. So it's taking functions that existed in one department and bringing them on a countywide level. So that's the first action before you is a budget amendment related to moving those positions from one department to another. Also involved, which Mr. Frue will come up and talk through, part of what this organizational chart, this redesign does, is makes, is further distinguishes the role between the CFO, the chief financial officer, and the county manager or the CEO. So those are very, as designed in North Carolina, those are very distinct roles. They also both need total access to the Board of Commissioners, and commissioners need to be able to seek specialized advice or guidance from both of them, so that that's the other intent. The third intent is one that you will hear about at your next meeting, as it comes to you as a recommendation from your audit committee, and that relates to the internal auditor. It brings the internal audit position to a place that she is the only link to the external audit committee, there's no staff on that committee, and in addition, provides the internal auditor direct access to commissioners, the county manager, CFO, and the budget office. So again, just making sure that we're aligning balance in the organization, and to do that, we're shifting resources, borrowing resources, borrowing talent, and trying to remove duplication. And I'm happy to answer any questions about... And I'm happy to answer any questions about the budget amendment. And then Mr. Frue will talk through the resolution to appoint the CFO. And I don't know if you have questions or want to take public comment just on the budget amendment or do them together.
So, we... In terms of what the Commission needs to vote on, we need to vote on the budget amendment and then we need to vote on the appointment of Tim Flora as the Chief Financial Officer, right?
That's right.
Okay.
We're asked to bring the budget amendment up because it does involve shifting resources from one department to another in the County Manager's office.
All right. I think when we take public comment on this, we'll just invite people to share thoughts on either of those topics.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. As our County Manager, Ms. Stone, was just describing, part of the function and reorganization is to make sure there's clean breaks, where there need to be clean breaks and direct access to Commissioners as functions are progressing in everyday fashion. As you all know, Tim Flora is our finance person. He's been the head of finance for a couple of years, but it happened in sort of a manner that's sort of outside the normal scope of business because he was appointed through the June 2015 Budget Ordinance, which authorized the County Manager, the then County Manager, Wanda Green, to appoint the Finance Officer. And he was appointed and signed the contract to have that position in July of 2015. So, this doesn't change what Mr. Flora does at all. It's just to clarify that loose end, that he's been appointed by the Commissioners to fulfill his duties in accordance with law. And that's the purpose of this resolution before the Board. If there's any questions, be glad to try to answer.
All right.
The only question I have, by doing that for Mr. Flora, that puts him back under us, just like Ms. Stone's under us, Kathy Hughes is under us. That puts him back... Basically, the Commissioners are his boss, right?
Yes, sir. Statutorily, that was always the case and has been the case. I mean, the Finance Director works for the Board. We just want to make sure that there's no appearance that he works for the County Manager. He's working directly for the Board. But you're correct, yes.
On this particular thing that I'm looking at here, it shows that he's kind of... He would be under Diane Price in them lines. Is that something different, Ms. Stone?
It's simply, if you look at it, and it may be difficult to see, shows that he's attached to budget and county management in a day-to-day operation. But you'll see the actual line is up to the Board of Commissioners. That there's also a line to the Board of Commissioners. He clearly is going to interface or any CFO will interface daily with budget and county management, but the reporting is clear.
I see the other line now.
I'm sorry if it's confusing.
Took me a little bit, but there it is. Thank you.
I think it's a good point to make that there's sort of a, you know, a daily operational, working with Diane in her office. But then there's also ultimately the direct reporting to the County Commission and direct supervision from this body.
May I ask a question here, though?
Yes, sir.
And maybe it's where I come from. But normally, you know, where Tim is reporting to the County Commissioners, it would be a straight line from us and the dotted line, should it be to the budget? Do we have that wrong? Correct me, Mandy, if I'm wrong.
I think you have it correct. We just use those different in our key. You'll see that both places. I'm happy to correct that if that's the more common understanding of it. I'd also tell you, it's a real challenge to take a big organizational chart. Tim shouldn't really show so far down either or the Internal Auditor, but I just ran out of room and that's...
Yeah, okay. Thanks.
Great. Good question. If there's no other questions from the Board right now, I'm going to invite a public comment. And we're going to take this both on the amendment and the structure and the resolution appointing Tim as the Chief Financial Officer for the county. So, any public comment on any of those items? All right. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Board. Mr. Belcher?
I would like to... Well, I'll make a motion to approve. But I also like to hear from Mr. Flora. I'd like to... I'd like a little commercial from you.
I'll second the motion.
I think it would be in order for you to speak to the citizens of the county and us and you can do it there or wherever you want to. But I think it'd be in order for you to do that and just say a word or two. And I appreciate your commitment and we'll go from there.
Commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity. This actually, I think, next week makes my ten-year mark with Buncombe County. And I will say that in the ten years that I have been here, the experience and the people I've got to work with and the boards I've got to work for have been a tremendous opportunity. And I can't say just how proud I am of the support I have gotten in this role, the staff that I get to work with on a daily basis. I think we do some tremendous things here. I'm excited about the progress and the opportunities that we are foregoing with or that we're pursuing in the finance world. I like the route we're taking as we sort of pursue our core principles that the County Manager has laid out in the last couple of months, where we're looking at transparency, accountability, equity and community engagement. These are things I'm excited about. These are things that I have been advocating for years. So, the fact that we are really able now to speak towards those things are really exciting. I like the fact, you know, I will say I'm a little geekish. I like numbers. That's sort of my comfort thing. Getting up in front and talking in front of people is maybe not necessarily my comfort thing. I like these back office jobs. But I will say the resources that you, as Commissioners, have provided for us here in the county are tremendous. And we thank you for those resources, whether they're technological resources, whether they're human capital resources, whether they're financial resources. None of the things that we do, we can't accomplish the things that we have been accomplishing without that support. And that's the support that comes from you and the constituents of us. So, with that, I would like to say thank you and I appreciate the opportunity to serve as your Chief Financial Officer. It is something that I don't take lightly and I look forward to serving you and doing whatever I can to continue to move this organization forward.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Flora? All right, thank you. Mr. Belcher, you said you were going to...
So, I need to make a motion for the budget amendment as well as the resolution appointing Tim Flora as Finance Director because we are combining both of them.
No, let's do one at a time.
We're going to do one at a time. So, I'll make a motion for the budget amendment. I'll do that and then let somebody else do the second one. So, I'll make a motion for the budget amendment that makes the changes as the organizational chart laid out.
And I'll second it again.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Need further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's approved unanimously? And the second item, resolution appointing Tim Flora as Finance Director.
I'll make the motion to approve for the resolution to appoint Tim Flora, Finance Director. I'll second.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, it's unanimous as well.
I would add for the public, Chairman, that in the package is his background and complete information regarding Mr. Flora.
The one other thing I would add is, you know, we've had a couple of workshops recently where we were going over some of the different kind of departmental financial plans. And we had... And one of the things I thought that's great that Tim and the other financial staff are working on are some new tools that we're going to have on our county website that really look at what the county's programs and operations are focused on, which are, you know, oftentimes big, you know, bureaucratic, kind of complicated operations, but creating some tools that really, I think, show very effectively how those programs are working, what taxpayers are getting for their investment in those different programs. So, I would just encourage folks to kind of stay tuned as we roll out some different new tools to really show the public how the county departments are operating, what funding they require, where that funding comes from, and to really make some pretty complicated financial things the county does much more accessible to the citizens of the county. So, appreciate your work on that and the work from the other staff to create some of these new ways to show the public what the county is working on and how their taxpayer dollars are being put to work. All right. Let's see, we don't have any board appointments this evening. So, I think we just have two announcements to make. On September 26, at 12:30 PM, the County Commission will have a workshop to discuss pre-K and early childhood education. That will be held on the first floor conference room here at 200 College Street. On October 3, at 5:00 PM, the County Commission will hold its regular meeting here in Room 326 at 200 College Street in downtown Asheville. There is no closed session for this evening, so we are adjourned.